We wait for the lawyer.
Okay, I will. Okay. I'll wait. I'll see what.
Directions we.
I don't want to say anything.
The ones that I take to like that and the ones I take. But I don't know. I'm thinking.
You won't do the other stuff, that'd be fine, but we can't. We need to wait on him.
A long time to come.
Hey buddy, you holding up the whole damn circus? I ain't letting one monkey stop us.
Put it all in one ear and I'll put mine to you.
I catch him. Don't have to worry about him.
Do you need some?
How do you hear?
Yeah.
Hey y'all, stop talking.
I'll be heading. I don't want to be here. Yeah, we have. I'm falling apart.
They've done that thing. Y'all got a number under Warren over there? Drop that shirt.
I bet he does.
Bad one.
He's important. We just put him on the case.
Oh, I see that. But he is. We got a lawyer. Are you getting my messages? Good morning. He wasn't a monkey going to stop this young circus. Come on.
Mr. Attorney, you ready?
I am, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
We're gonna call this special, excuse me, special meeting to order this morning. We have, uh, about three, possibly four items on the, uh, agenda. Uh, welcome to all that time to come out. The first item will be the road bond.
If you take that, Mr. Chairman.
The administrator and the attorney.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, as you opened the meeting, um, just a procedural, uh, at your last meeting last week, you all voted, uh, or actually you had noticed from your Commissioner Jaeger that he wouldn't be here today. He had another, uh, out of town obligation and, um, you noted for the record moving forward that you would provide this capability, um, with the technology that we have. So if, obviously it's noted for the record, the video and the minutes, but you have a full complement of your commission today and so I thank the Commissioner for attending. Um, with regards to your first item today is the, uh, road bond public hearing for both the ordinance, the adoption of your ordinance, your resolution and your supplemental. Um, now if you recall on April 7th at our special meeting, we had the introduction. The issue was brought to you. Uh, Mr. Ralph Seelon spoke with you all with regards to the process and you authorized the staff and myself to move forward with the public notice and hearing and introduction of an initial ordinance and resolution, uh, scheduled for today noon. Um, those steps have all been taken, uh, and have been accomplished through the clerk and the administration. Uh, I have a copy of the proof of publication that's been provided by Ms. Roberts. I'm gonna provide that. She has a copy for the public record as well, but just so you know that your notice requirements under statute 125 have been met. Um, for purposes of the public hearing, um, if I can, I think the proper way to do it will, most likely will ask our bond counsel, Mr. Mark Mushton and Mr. Seelon, uh, to make some initial comments, um, answer any questions of the commission and then we also obviously open it to the public hearing for the purpose of the adoption of the ordinance. Um, and we'll provide you each a copy of those. Um, if I have permission from the commission, I'd like to start by reading the ordinance by title and then we'll move forward from the public hearing from there. Uh, the advertised, uh, notice for today and the ordinance reads as follows. It's an ordinance of Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, Florida authorizing issuance of gas tax revenue bonds payable from specified revenue sources. Such bonds to be issued for principal purpose of financing the costs of certain transportation improvements within the county and providing for an effective date. Uh, we have a proposed resolution and def, uh, I'm sorry, ordinance. Um, I'd ask Mr. Mark Mushton to come up, um, if you would, Mark, make some initial comments with regards to the ordinance. Um, and then what we'll do, Mr. Chairman, before the commission asks their questions, we can open up to the public, have your public hearing and then move forward. Thank you, Mark.
Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
It's the afternoon now, 12 o'clock meeting.
I'm Mark Mushton with the firm Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson in Tallahassee. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I, I'm just gonna kinda hit the highlights of what we're doing and let, uh, Mr. Seelon, uh, come up and, and correct me. He, he claims to be a country lawyer. I, I actually have a, a, I'm licensed by the bar, so I am a, uh, I, I am a bond lawyer. That's what I do. Uh, you have three documents that are under consideration today. The first is an ordinance, uh, that's a short ordinance that authorizes you to, to issue gas tax bonds secured by gas taxes. The second is what we call a bond resolution. It's kind of a thick document. It's sort of the guts of your contractual agreement with the bondholders. And the last is a supplemental resolution that has a bunch of exhibits to it. This relates to the specific series of bonds we're proposing to do. Uh, so the process is, this is the, uh, what, what we anticipate being the only, uh, time that you will consider this. Uh, what we'll do after this meeting, if you approve going forward, uh, the underwriter will send packages to the rating agencies and bond insurers to get their feedback and a rating and, and an insurance commitment hopefully. And then if those, uh, comply with these documents, they then will, will market the bonds. The bonds come back within the parameters we set forth in this resolution, the chair and clerk would be authorized to sign it and we would proceed to closing. There's a chance in that that the bond insurer may ask for something that we haven't anticipated. If that's the case, we'd come back to you and get further approval before we did anything else. So I'm gonna sit down unless you have specific questions of me and happy to, to go over any of that that, that, uh, that you'd like me to.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, I've read the ordinance for purposes of the record by title with your permission. Um, I would recommend that the commission now open it up to public comment, um, for any comments or questions of the community before you obviously introduce it and discuss it amongst the commission.
All right, at this time, we will open up the public comment. Is there any public comment concerning or any questions with this, uh, road bond? Anyone? Anyone? Now, so we have none. No public comment.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, then amongst the commission, um, and then obviously we have the supplemental and the resolution as well. I can, if you have no preference, I can read them by title, um, introduce those, offer them to you and then we can take care of each by a vote, um, following Mr. Seelon's comments.
Uh, any, any questions from the board? Questions on this?
I, I will have some general questions, um, but whenever is appropriate, I can wait for those.
With no initial comments from the public, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution by title as well as the supplemental. Um, and again, I'd ask you to open the resolution supplemental to the public and then we can turn it to the commission. Uh, the resolution reads as follows in front of you. It's the resolution of Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida supplementing a resolution of the county entitled a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida authorizing the issuance of Gulf County, Florida of not tack, not exceeding $20 million in aggregate principal amount of gas tax revenue bonds. Series 2015A in taxable gas tax revenue refunding bonds as well as series 2015B in order to provide funds for the purposes of financing the costs of certain transportation improvements within the county and refunding the county's gas tax revenue refunding bonds, series 2006. Pledging the monies received from the county from the county's constitutional gas tax, local option gas tax and the county gas tax to secure payment of the principal of and interest on the said bonds, providing for the rights of the holders of said bonds and providing for certain additional matters in respect to said bonds and providing for an effective date for this resolution, providing certain terms and details of such bonds including authorizing a negotiated sale of said bonds to Harbor Financial Services and the execution and delivery of a bond purchase contract with respect thereto upon compliance with certain parameters, appointing the paying agent and register with respect to said bonds and authorizing the execution and delivery of an official statement with respect thereto and providing an effective date. Uh, that's the title of the resolution, um, Commissioners, read by, uh, title. If you would, Mr. Chairman, if you'd open that to any public comment as well.
At this time, we'll go back to the public. Any questions from the public on the resolution? If I have any questions from the public. Having none, at this time, we will, uh, turn to the board. Any board members have any questions concerning the resolution? Any board member?
I have questions concerning the transaction, not necessarily the resolution per se. So whenever is appropriate, I'll ask those questions.
Attorney? Comment from the public or from the board at this time?
I'm gonna go ahead and read the final, uh, resolution with regards to this. We'll introduce it and then we'll turn it to the Commissioners. Uh, the third is a resolution of Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida authorizing the issuance of Gulf County of Florida, uh, not exceeding 17.5 million in aggregate principal amount of gas tax revenue bonds, series 2015A and taxable gas tax revenue for refunding bonds. Series 2015B in order to provide funds for the purposes of financing the cost of certain transportation improvements within the county and refunding the county's gas tax revenue refunding bonds. Series 2006 pledging the monies received from the county from the county's constitutional gas tax, local option gas tax and the county tax to secure payments, payment of the principal and of interest on said bonds and providing for the rights of holders of said bonds, providing certain additional matters in respect to said bonds and providing for an effective date and resolution. Uh, Commissioners, I have some additional comments after you open it up.
Okay. Back again to the public. You want in the public? And from the public, anyone? Forward. Attorney?
Uh, Commissioners, if there's no public comment with regards to the three, um, obviously you're all gonna have your questions for the staff and the professionals. Um, ultimately, you'll introduce to each of you five Commissioners for an authorizing vote for the chairman to execute these and to move forward with the actions that you've instructed us to this point. Um, but I'd be happy to now turn it over to the commission for the questions and comments from the commission.
Okay. At this time, any of the commission, uh, Commissioner Jaeger, can you hear?
I can.
There you go. Thank you, sir. At this time, we're gonna come here to the board members now. All right, you have the floor, Commissioner.
I have a few questions. Um, I've received some information regarding the bond transaction and, um, I don't know if, uh, you want me to direct them to Ralph or to staff because I'm, I'm certain that somebody has reviewed these numbers on our behalf and I'm not certain who that is. My, my guess is that our bond counsel is reviewing from a legal perspective that everything is compliant with, with law and our documents are in compliance, but not reviewing it from a business perspective. And, um, my questions pertain more to the transaction from a business perspective. So my first question would be, I, I have a debt service comparison here and this is regarding the refunding. And we have what we refer to as, um, bad money and good money and those are just, uh, language that, that is used regarding, uh, the, the money and the tax treatments, but the, both of these comprise the amount that is being refunded as a bond. Um, on these comparisons, the discount rate that was used for the good money was 2.975% and the discount rate that was used on the bad money was 4.217%. And I was curious as to why we would have such a discrepancy with the discount rate on the debt service comparisons.
Answer to that. Uh, Mark? Ralph, would you, if you'd like to?
One taxable and one tax exempt.
And I can understand that and we're gonna need, um, Mr. Seelon to speak on a microphone so that the public can hear him, um, when we view the meeting.
The specific answer to your question, Commissioner, is that there's taxable bonds and there's tax exempt bonds, the lower rates on the tax exempts. We had to do some taxable bonds to make the process work because you all had given us certain things you wanted to have done. And one of them, in, in order to do all of them, included refunding those bonds that you referred to and we had to throw in some taxable's to, because there were only 75% of that issue that's still available was available for tax exempt. Now, I'd be happy to explain anything, but I'm gonna try not to talk too much. I mean, this has been smoked over since November. I've been working on this thing to get Don and Michael satisfied with the help of Mark and with the help of our analysts, so.
And I understand that and I'm not here to force you to answer a lot of questions. And I would make the assumption that someone from the county, be it our chairman or staff, has gone through this already with you. You've already done your job.
I can tell you for certain, between Mike and Don, it's been, and the attorney, who incidentally I didn't know before, we, and, and the three of them have been along all the way and made corrections and additions and subtractions and, well, we'd rather do it this way and on your behalf. And they worked for you.
Right. And that's why, i- if we have had staff members who have been involved in this, I'm happy to ask them the questions.
But you can ask whoever you want to.
Um, I, I know that our attorney would be looking at it from a legal perspective, but I really don't have issues from a legal perspective. They're, they're more of a business decision questions.
The numbers will actually be verified by an independent, and that'll go in the final documents to say that the numbers are accurate. Now, to your specific thing, whether it's a good business deal or not, nobody except your staff, as far as I know, can make that recommendation to you. I can make it to you, but you might think that was self-serving.
I, I agree with you and that's why I don't really want to direct my questions to you unless they come down to a, okay. And, and Mr. Hammond, if you're, if you're the staff member that has been handling this issue, I'm happy to direct my questions to you.
The net result is, a- actually, even though that, that taxable number's high, it is, it is at the current rate that we're paying for the tax exempt bonds because we're how many years into this, nine years into this deal. The net result is, there are two, two positives to refunding this bad debt with, with taxable money. You get a million dollars back that you wouldn't be eligible to get back till 2029. That's, that's out there in limbo. And number two is you save $177,000 net off of the refinancing. So even though there's a, as a, today, there is a big difference between the tax exempt bonds and the taxable bonds. Nine years into the tax exempt bonds that we did in 2000, whatever, whatever, nine years ago, 2006, it's basically the same rate we're paying on tax exempt bonds today. So it is a net, net savings to the county of a $175,000, $177,000 and it also gets a million dollars back that would be tied up till 2029, which is the pledge that the county had to put up when the, when the bonding agency went bankrupt.
Okay. And bear with me, if you will, because I, I need to understand this, so I need to walk through this a little bit. Regarding the million dollars, the refunding, um, regardless of where we had the buns, the bonds refunded, we would stand to get the million back. That is regarding the insurance issue and if, if there is, um...
Well, that's not an accurate statement. To tell you that, that's not, I mean, we had to make special and with the help of the clerk there. But anyway, uh, be happy to explain all that to you some other time, but that's not have a thing in the world to do with what you just said.
But, but the million was put up because of the insurance company failure. I don't know who chose the insurance company. I wasn't here on the board at that time. I don't know who directed us to an insurance company that would shortly fail, but the million dollars was put up because of the failure of the insurance company. Surely if the bonds were refunded and other security was put in place, if the million isn't necessary any longer for that security, then it would be released. But that's not my issue. The, and the other situation with the million, and, and these are from your documents, um, from Harbor Financial Services, it is actually placed with the good money on the 2006, um, refund, re, refunding amount. It's not on the bad money. So when we look at the bad money, in refinancing this bad money, we have a, a large discount rate, 4.217 as opposed to the 2.975 that's on the good money. And when you look at the savings, it's, it's actually a loss. There, there's a column called savings, but it is actually a loss.
But, but you have to look at it overall and, oh, I apologize. Okay. I can explain.
And you talk about the net savings. I can understand putting these together, that you can have a net savings because there is a savings on the good money, but on the bad money...
The only way to get your million back is to refinance this and that's what made the deal complicated and why it took nine months. The only way to get our million back was to refinance the bad money, okay? And that's basically why we did this. So, I mean, if, if that's...
I would like to, to see that because I, I don't, I, I don't understand how that could actually be the case. So I would like to see that in writing. See, these, these are things. Mr. Chairman, I, I could see your frustration. Have you, have you reviewed these items? If, if you look at refunding the bad money, there, there is a, a loss here of 178,534. When you add in the, the true, um, loss and the cost of 62,000 for actually doing the refunding, it's a loss to the county of over $178,000. So I, I think we need to look at these as different issues. If, if it is the proper thing, we do show a savings on the good money. So that, that may be the right thing to do, but refunding the bad money is most certainly a loss to the county.
The, the only way to do the entire deal and get the million dollars back for the county is to, is to refund the bad money. That's the only way. And we've, we've looked at it a lot of different ways and, and bond counsel's looked at it to do it legally and that's why we hire him to, to do it legally and it's the only way to get our money back. We've looked at it, but the net result, the overall deal saves the county $177,000 plus we get our million dollars back. That's the bottom line. I mean, and, and again, you hire us to, to look out for your interest. We hire professionals to look out for our interest and that's what the professionals tell us.
And, and the people elect us to make the decisions on an issue like this where we are putting the county taxpayers into debt, that they will pay for years to come. And at the last meeting where we discussed this issue, Mr. Butler stated that, that you didn't care how you got it done, you just needed to get it done so that this was not shopped, that it was not looked at from different angles and from other, um, bond issuers. That was, that was not considered, that it, you just wanted to get it done. That was at the last meeting. Now, to me, this bad money refunding, it, it's not, it's something that no corporate entity would do. It, it doesn't make any economic sense. Now, if you can show me where it's impossible to have this done in a, a different fashion, but I, I don't, I don't believe that, Mr. Hammond.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not lying to you and we hire professionals and, and professional lawyer and a professional to do it. The only way to get your million back legally and get out of the, of the terms of the bond agreement which said that you had to have a triple A rated bond agency, which does not exist anymore. There are no triple A rated bond agencies. We had MBIA, which was the biggest in the country and they went bankrupt when, when the, when the market collapsed. So it's the only way to get your money back. The, the board hired the administrator and he's put me in charge of this project to make good recommendations to the board. We recommended something to you that saves the county taxpayers over the life of this deal, $177,000 and immediately gets your $1 million back to put in reserve or wherever you want to put it. In addition to that, it gets you 5 million and some change in new money to pave roads. Now, that is the best plan and we've been working on this off and on for the last five years. This is the best plan, the cheapest plan, the best deal for the county that we can bring to you. Now, I, I, I hate that you don't understand the fact of good money and bad money and taxable and not taxable. We cannot legally refund with tax exempt bonds some of those existing bonds and, and one of y'all chime in whenever you get ready. I mean, that's, that's just the fact of the matter. That there are certain bonds, tax exempt bonds that you can't refund with other tax exempt bonds and that's why we're having to do it with taxable bonds. It's still at par or less than what you're paying on your tax exempt bond from nine years ago.
And, and Mr. Hammond, I do understand the difference between bad and good money and tax exempt and non-tax exempt. Thank you. I do understand that. And I also understand that nothing else was presented to this board and I asked this question at the last meeting, was this, was this shopped? Was this considered? So are you telling me that if the bond was satisfied, that you wouldn't get your million dollars back?
I, I don't understand the question.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I mean, do you want me to answer the question? I don't understand what you're saying.
My issue, my issue is not about the million dollars. You're saying that it's the only way to get the million dollars back. So if...
No, 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 let me, if the board wanted to come up with, uh, 13 million dollars or whatever and pay it off in full out of, out of your own coffers, that's certainly one of the way. I'm not saying it's the only way. If you wanna, if you wanna reissue tax exempt bonds to pay off that tax exempt debt, I'm telling you, this is the only way that we can do it legally. And that's comes from our professionals that we hired.
Well, well, I disagree and this board that has to make the decisions hasn't seen any of that. We haven't seen how any of this is calculated. Nothing has been presented to us. This is all apparently your decision on behalf of the county. So if you're telling me that on behalf of the county, that you have reviewed this transaction and you are telling this board that this is the, the best deal for the taxpayers of this county, then you tell me that.
I am. I, I, that is a good statement, yes. I think it's the best deal for the, for the, for the citizens. You hire a staff, you have an administrator and we have to make recommendations to you. And we are making that recommendation.
Commissioner, if I can, I just want to offer a comment with regards to the process. Where the county has asked the staff to go is to explore how to restructure this. So the final rate, the best deal that you're referring to, we move forward from today, the chairman has the authority to, if you grant him the authority to sign the resolution and the ordinance, the staff and the professionals will go out to market, obviously, and now we're gonna look, finalize the detail with regards to the rates. But up until today, with regards to the process, to restructure and get that refunding of that million dollars, up until this point, the recommendation from staff that is the best deal. With regards to the final rates and what you have, they're obviously gonna go out to market and we're gonna finalize this in the next couple of weeks. So in terms of the process, the direction we've received from the commission is to go out and find how do we get there? So the path has been presented. This is the path that's been presented and it is recommended. Now, there's obviously several steps to take place after this to finalize and, and, but today with regards to the resolution that you're authorizing the chairman to sign, the staff to move forward, but in terms of, if, if the commission's desire is to re, get back and recoup that million dollars today or in the next month, this is the path in which you do it. If the commission's not seeking to recapture that million dollars to secure the original bonds, then they need to not go forward with this process.
But, but clearly, no other provider has been considered and this is nothing, this is not a comment on Harbor Financial Services anyway, but as, as a county, we have a responsibility to consider various options. You, Mr. Mr. Butler said last meeting that nothing else was considered because you wanted to get it done. Now, it sounds like you're telling me today that it was considered. I, I don't know what the answer is. I'm looking at a debt service schedule, for instance, here on the new money. Now, that was the old money. I have concerns regarding the refunding of the old money, particularly the bad money, which I still think this is a bad deal. But on the new money, I'm looking at a debt service schedule. I'm looking at a principal payment with a coupon rate of .7% with, with an interest payment of 78,000. But when you do the simple math, the, the interest payment is more in the line of 35,600. I'm rounding. I'm, when I'm talking, I'm speaking in round numbers. This debt service schedule does not make sense to me. There hasn't been enough time for me to flush this out. Apparently you all have been working on it since November, but I haven't seen any numbers till I asked for them. Nothing was provided until I asked for them and, um, Ralph, Ralph's company very graciously provided them with no issue. But I would have liked to have received these from the staff ahead of time. See, the, these are the decisions that this board is supposed to be making. These are the decisions that this board should be concerned about, uh, debt for county taxpayers and the contracts that we enter into, not the location of a small dog park in, in a park out of someone's district, which seems to be the biggest issue, or whether a, a dog can go on a baseball field or not. These are the big issues that this board, gentlemen, that we should be concerned about and this is long-term. This is a long-term issue. Um, I, I have another question. I, I would like to know how big of a premium that you expect to get, you're going to... You're going to buy this, hold it for a day or two, and potentially sell it. And I'd like to know, what type of a premium do you expect?
That will be discovered when we market it. But the best estimate is what's in there.
Well, I did not receive what you expect to get for a premium when you sell it on the market, whether it's 1%, 2%, 3%.
But you did get it. There's some discount bonds, there's some premium bonds, there's some par bonds, depending on the maturity. And what we're finding now in the market is that most bonds, municipal bonds, are being sold at a premium because people who hold these bonds don't want this low coupon. So we jump the coupon, make them pay us enough to come up with this savings, and that's how much the premium is to buy this higher coupon, to make the yield work.
So you're saying that you could not make this issue with best efforts in issuing these bonds?
Lady, if you've got a best effort, you can make it anything you want to know. You can have a damn competitive deal and advertise, and everybody in the world come by here and put in a bid. Three years from now, you might get it done. But nobody, to my knowledge, has done what we have done to be able to get it in a shape that can be marketed for you all to accomplish these things that they ask us to make happen. I cannot tell you with certainty what the premium will be. I can tell you with certainty what we did yesterday, which is fairly recent.
Right. Well, I asked you what...
Vanity County, and how many of those were premium and how much it was. And depending on who you're dicking with to try to get them to buy the bonds is how much they need in premium to put it in their portfolio. And that is what we negotiate on your behalf. I think we are more capable of doing that than you all are. And I think your staff is more capable of understanding what we're doing than you are. Now, that's all pretty straightforward, and I know you're smart as hell. I've already discovered that. And you've got some other people who are helping you with that. I've discovered that, too. But the fact of the matter is, I am very proud of what we have got. And if it can be examined with a fair mind, whoever that is, will tell you, that's what's happening. You've got a hell of a deal, and I'm proud to be here representing it.
Well, and certainly, as I stated in the beginning, this is no reflection on you or your company. And we have, typically, we go out for bid. On items, we have an open market, and that is what is encouraged in government. I know this is a little bit of a different situation.
You're a little wrong there.
Let me finish. It's a little bit of a different situation than many of our transactions that we enter into. However, I would think that, being that you've been doing this for a long time and you are the expert, that there is some type of a premium with the timing that you would anticipate. You would not know exactly.
That's what you've got on that scale.
Can I read?
I did receive, I did receive an email on the way here from Philip that, of course, just came in on my way in and was not able to read the attachments on my, you know, there just wasn't time to read the attachments.
You also might say, excuse me...
Let's hold it down. Now, one at a time, please.
You also might tell this group that what you sent me was on Sunday night about 5:00, and I got that responded to before I went to bed at midnight.
Yes, you did respond and say you would send the things, and I appreciate that.
Would you let me finish now, please, ma'am?
Go ahead. You have the floor, sir.
I was trying my best with the limited time I had because I've been traveling ever since then. But I told the staff what all we needed. But for example, your questions, I would have to give you a lesson in Municipal Bonds 101 to explain to you how unreasonable a question is that says, "Give me the interest rates for the last three years." I did have somebody on our outfit look up how many, that was 23,000 bond deals that's been doing in the last three years. I'm not going to spend anybody's time getting you the interest rates on 23,000 bond deals because it's no relevance to what we're doing here.
Well, that, I'm sorry, are you finished? I'd like to respond.
I'm going to try to be finished.
That is something...
I'm going to keep this in order.
I apologize. Way, way, way out of hand. Let me ask a question.
I would like to just respond to Mr. Salon's comments.
I will let you. I want to ask you a question. Have any time since this came up, have you sat down and had a one-on-one talk with Mr. Butler, our attorney, Mr. Hammond, or any combination of those three? Have you sat down and talked with them on this bond we're talking about right here today? Have you...
I will reiterate again that for the two and a half, approximate two and a half, I am answering you. You don't tell me how to answer. I am responding to your question. I have stated for the past two and a half approximate years that I have been on this board, that this is the type of information that I want to be provided with at the time that it is available. And it continues to go on, that nothing is provided until we walk in here. And this goes on. I am not going to go and sit in someone's office and say, "Well, what's going on now? What's available now?" You know, other staff members can respond and can let you know what's happening. I don't understand why certain people in the administration continue to keep it quiet. But this board, it comes back to this board because it's the people on this board that allow it to happen. These are things that, Mr. Salon shouldn't be here today listening to this. These are things that should have been discussed and hashed out before he came in, and this should be a simple public hearing. I agree with that. And I am sorry that I had to send you that email at the last minute, and this is no reflection on you. This is a communication issue between myself and the staff. That has been going on for two years.
All right, well, let's speak. Let me ask this question. I come in, I'm here, I was here yesterday, today, and I'll be back tomorrow, and I've come down here, I live in the north end of the county, everybody knows, I'm making my point to come out here and sit down with these people. That young lady, that man right there, I'll tell you, this lady over here, I'll tell you, all of them here. If I have questions, that's what they're for. You know, they don't know what questions is floating around in my mind until I come in and ask them. I say, "Can you enlighten me on this?", and they will. So, you know, I think one of your big problems is a communications problem and the fact that you're controlling that. You don't want to come out and sit down and talk with Mr. Butler, or sit down. These people, they work for you, just like they work for Commissioner Quinn, Mr. Jaeger, and all of us. And that's what we hire these people to do.
And are you, may I respond?
Yes, and then you also have the right to come back and address the question you had to Mr. Salon. Go ahead with this one.
I have asked for information to be provided to me. I do not have questions until I could see the information and review it. Now, I don't think it's efficient for me to come and sit in someone's office and take up their time. All I hear is about how busy the administration is, how they are overworked and how busy they are, they have a lot going on. I think it's inappropriate for me to walk in and sit down and want to chat. Now, if I could be provided the information and review, and then follow up with questions prior to the meeting, that is the way I would like to function. I think as an elected official, I should get to select the way that I function. I have been told not to put things in writing because it creates a public record. That is precisely why I put things in writing. And I will continue to function in this manner. When we come in here to a regular meeting, we will get a stack of documents, this thick of things that are handed to us right before we vote. Nothing I haven't said before. But it still comes back to the people on this board that allow it to happen. This board is allowing us to function this way.
You know what? Commissioner, okay, just a minute. Commissioner Jaeger, you have a comment, sir?
We sat here for 20 or 25 minutes discussing a lot of different things, and I understand District 3's concerns. However, I have been involved with this process with asking questions for the last couple of months. Matter of fact, two years ago, I wasn't in support of this because we couldn't get the refunded million dollars. Now, through the process of me being involved, and I know that you've been involved and others have been involved in asking questions, what I would prefer now is to find the rest, what the rest of the board feels. I mean, this isn't just about a relationship with staff or what staff is doing. I disagree with some of the things that were said, and so I would like to proceed after 25 or 30 minutes of discussion of this. And if we need a motion to do that, I will provide that.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick response to that. The only reason that, Commissioner Jaeger, the only reason that the discussion went in that direction was because that's the direction that it was taken in. I'm trying to find out the information about this bond. This is a $5 million bond. It's costing us over $300,000 to refund and take the new money. And what are, what are we, I'm not finished. Commissioner Jaeger, I'm not finished. I'm almost finished. How much are we really going to get paved? When we get this money, we share it with the city, how much are we going to really net in paving? And because it's not much, clearly, we need roads paved. The better deal we get upfront, the more paving we can get done. And I feel like that's my job as a county commissioner, to review the numbers, to look at the deals before we enter into them, and make sure it's the right deal. I'm finished.
All right. Commissioner Jaeger, do you have a response?
Yeah, well, my response is that I've got the information that I've needed over the years, and I've got the information I need on this. I'm confident in staff, I'm confident in our county attorney, I'm confident in neighbors giving, I'm confident in our, if I see one, and I love it, and I've seen the numbers, I'm prepared to move forward with this particular issue. Listen, let me say one other thing. I was in Walton County the day before yesterday, yesterday, day before yesterday, and talking to their road department. They have 19, let me repeat that, 19 motor graders in Walton County. We have one that is actually operational, that one that we use as a spare. And the reason we have that is because we have our roads paved, and we did it through this process. And to get this process going again and to get our million dollars back, I'm ready to proceed.
Thank you. Now, did you want to go back and address Mr. Salon on the question when I called for the order here? Do you want to go back and address him? I'll give you that. And then that said, I'm going to the attorneys.
I think I did. I just wanted to say that this is not about you or your company. These are questions that I had, and I appreciate the response that I've had from Philip and from you. I do appreciate that. It's not an issue here. The issue is, I would have liked for staff to have provided that early on. Use of the process has been going on for several months, and I would like to have seen it earlier from our staff, not from you. It's not your responsibility.
Thank you, ma'am.
That all, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am.
Chair.
Just, like I said, the documents in front of you, you allowed me to read them by title, and some of them are lengthy. But to draw some out for the public, for the minutes, and for emphasis, it's important to note, the county establishes whereas clauses when you adopt ordinances, you establish findings. They're justifications why you adopt laws, why you adopt local ordinances, why you resolve to do things. But I'm just going to read to you, the commissioners, and it addresses the conversation you had for the last 20 minutes or so. But with regards to Mr. Salon, his entity, Harbor Financial, Mr. Muschens here with us as bond counsel. The process that I spoke to earlier, but it reads as follows under Section 1, "Due to the present volatility of the market for tax-exempt obligations such as Series 2015 bonds, it is in the best interest of the county to sell the bonds by a negotiated sale, allowing the county to enter the market at the most advantageous time and conditions, rather than at a specified advertised date, thereby permitting the county to obtain the best possible price and interest rate for the Series 2015 bonds." So at a certain point, we do rely on the professionals and to go to market. We have worked with the entity to move to this today on our public hearing. The resolutions and the ordinance that you're going to adopt now further enable them and your staff to move forward and secure their very best rates and financing that the county can get within the ballfield or the parameters in which we've set up. The ordinance and the resolutions provide us those authorities to move forward on your behalf. But these findings are not our findings. These findings are this five commissioners' findings. So these are all in here to justify the decisions that you're making, and you're allowing Harbor Financial and the staff to move forward in this manner to secure the very best financing rates we can get for the county in terms of negotiations and getting out there at the opportune time that Mr. Salon and his staff can find the very best rates in the market. So that's just one of the findings, but there are many there, and I just want the commission to understand that these are your findings. These are not the staff's. These are the commission's when you adopt this resolution and ordinance. Thank you.
All right, that all, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hammond, do you have it?
Just one last thing, again, and staff, specifically Don, and he delegated this to me, is following the direction of the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners directed us to bring this back to you, and that's what your staff does. You have a paid staff, and that's what we do, and make the best recommendation for you and the taxpayers of Guff County. Now, whether or not we get a dollar to pave roads or $5 million to pave roads, if we weren't doing any new money on this deal, it is a good deal. We will save money in the long run, and we get our million dollars back. If we were not doing any new roads, forget that, just we weren't doing anything else, it is a good deal, just on the face of the refinancing and getting out from under the terms of the 2006 agreement. But you are getting some new money. The City of Port St. Joe's getting maybe plus, and the City of Willow Hitzkirk's getting half a million, and the county's going to get about three and a half million. So overall, it is a great deal. In my tenure with the county since 1992, I've never seen the rates lower than they are today, and we need to take advantage of it.
Let's go here, Commissioner McLemore.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make one statement here. We've sat here now for about 45 minutes discussing this issue. Ms. Brian, I'm going to direct this at you. And this is not nothing new. You know, we come to these board meetings, some of them last three hours. My point is, Ms. Brian, if you had just taken the time, taken the time to come by and sit down with your staff that works for you, you know, we wouldn't have to go through this every single time. They can answer your questions. I promise you, they can answer your questions. But I am tired of sitting here for three or four hours, listening to you.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick response.
Second highest, Commissioner Brian.
I spent three hours with our county administrator and county attorney, and I'd say 95% of that three hours was me taking personal attacks. The best way for me to deal with the county administrator, who clearly does not want to deal with me, the community has seen it, it's taken place here in this room, is by email. And if I have questions, after reviewing the information, I will ask him. I'm an elected official, just like you are, Commissioner McLemore. And when I come into this meeting, when I come into this meeting, I will ask my questions. And if you want to leave, that's your prerogative. But I will ask the questions. I will come in here, I will represent not only the people of District 3, but the people of the whole county. See, these are the important issues. Obligating our taxpayers to pay money, entering into contracts, policy, these are the important issues that this board should be considering, not who gets a load of dirt, who gets favors done in their district. That's not what being a commissioner is about.
Mr. Chairman, all that's inappropriate.
I know it is. I know it is.
There's other commissioners that do crazy stuff that again, is inappropriate. We need to move on with the issues of the day.
All right, telling me I'm one term is not inappropriate.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Administrator, do you have any more before we make a vote here? Recommendation? Do you have anything? Now, we've, like I say, this has got totally away from where it should.
We're certainly on a long tangent. I meant, Commissioner May, that I had attacked her in a meeting. That was nothing like that. She has spun that in her way to make it sound like someone had done something wrong to her. That is not true. No need us even talking about it anymore. But her angle on the story is not correct.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Attorney? All right, what's the recommendation?
I need to vote on this, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, I'm going to, I've read them by title, but I'm going to ask you each. I can, I will bring them each up individually. If there's motions for an action to authorize the commission to move forward and authorize the chairman to sign. the chairman to sign. And I will start with the ordinance that I read previously, and it's the ordinance of the Board of Gulf County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida authorizing issuance of a gas tax revenue bond payable from specified revenue sources. Such bonds to be issued for the principal purpose of financing the costs of certain transportation improvements within the county. Provides for an effective date, I've already indicated, you've publicly noticed today's hearing, you have conducted your public hearing and asked for public comment and discussion amongst the commission. If there's a motion or an action of the board to offer it onto the record for the authorization to move forward.
All right, thank you, sir.
I put, yeah, I'll put it into a motion. That's what you need, isn't it, Mr. Attorney?
We need an authorizing motion to take action.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner McLemore. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Quinn. What's, any public discussion? More board discussion? Not, we'll go down the line here. Commissioner Quinn, do you vote for or against?
For.
For. Mr. McLemore?
For.
Commissioner Bryan?
Against.
Against. Commissioner Jaeger?
For.
And the chair votes for. Motion passed four to one.
Mr. Chairman, the second item is the resolution I introduced previously. It's a resolution of Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida authorizing issuance by Gulf County, Florida of not exceeding seventeen point five million in aggregate principal amount of a gas tax revenue bonds, Series twenty fifteen A, and taxable gas tax revenue refunding bonds, Series twenty fifteen B, in order to provide funds for the purposes of financing the costs of certain transportation improvements within the county and refunding county's gas tax revenue refunding bonds, Series two thousand and six, pledging the monies received from the county, by the county, from the county's constitutional gas tax, local option gas tax, and county tax, gas tax to secure payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds, providing for the rights of the holders of said bonds, providing for certain additional matters in respect to said bonds, and providing for an effective date for this resolution, if there is a motion of the board to adopt that resolution.
All right, we're open for a motion.
Motion to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, motion by Commissioner McLemore. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. All right. Anyone in the audience, any questions? Any fellow board, just anyone on the board, any questions? Not? Did I hear something over here?
No, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. At this time, we'll, I'll just go down the line, vote. Commissioner Quinn, how do you vote? For or against?
For.
Vote for. Mr. McLemore, for or against?
For.
Commissioner Bryan, how do you vote?
Against.
Against. Commissioner Jaeger, how do you vote?
I vote for.
For, and the chair votes for. Motion passed four to one.
Mr. Chairman, the supplemental resolution reads as follows. The resolution of Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida supplementing a resolution of the county entitled a resolution of the Board, uh, County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida authorizing the issuance by Gulf County, Florida of not exceeding twenty million in aggregate principal amount of gas tax revenue bonds, Series twenty fifteen A, and taxable gas tax revenue refunding bonds, Series twenty fifteen B, in order to provide funds for the purposes of financing the costs of certain transportation improvements within the county and refunding the county's gas tax revenue refunding bonds, Series two thousand and six, pledging the monies received by the county from the county's constitutional gas tax, local option gas tax, and county gas tax to secure payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds, providing for the rights of the holders of said bonds, providing for certain additional matters in respect to said bonds, and providing for an effective date for this resolution, providing certain terms and details of such bonds, including authorizing a negotiated sale of said bonds to Harbor Financial Services, and the execution of delivery of a bond purchase contract with respect thereto upon compliance with certain parameters, appointing the paying agent and register with respect to said bonds, and authorizing the execution and delivery of an official statement with respect thereto, and providing an effective date. By title.
All right. Board is open for a motion.
Motion to move forward, Mr. Chairman.
Motion? Do you hear a second?
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. All right, anyone in the audience? None, anyone? Member of the board? Not? Mr. Quinn, do you vote for or against?
For.
Mr. McLemore, for or against?
For.
Commissioner Bryan, for or against?
Against.
Against, no. Commissioner Jaeger? For or against?
For.
And the chair votes for. Motion passed four to one.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The county, with the authorizing actions in that resolution and ordinance, will move forward. The proper authorizations are stated in those, and the county will move forward accordingly with regards to the next actions on the bond.
All right, thank you, sir.
This will be a battle process, so she'll be closed by the middle of next month, is that correct?
We'll do it, we'll say the weekend, we're comfortable.
All right. Yes, not that you haven't, just stay in contact with our staff here, and they'll post.
Chairman, we'll do that, but I can tell you, they'll do it as well.
Sure they will.
And, and you are to be congratulated, I think, I work with a lot of different people. I think you're to be congratulated on your staff here, I feel compelled to say that. And, uh, and I've been a county commissioner, Mr. Bryan, and I, I know a lot of, working with each other is difficult at times, but I would suggest that y'all, and I think you need to take the lead, have a little prayer meeting about that, my term, but anyway, you need to get to where y'all can talk to each other and the way you can talk to staff, and I don't want to start something else, I just wanted to say that. Thank you for allowing me to.
All right. Mr. Seelon, thank you for coming, and we'll be.
We'll try to do you a good job.
Thank you, sir. Have a safe trip wherever your next destination is.
Go home, go to bed, you can believe it.
Yeah, you bet. Would you close a ninety-something million dollar yesterday?
Oh, you didn't.
All right, all right.
Ninety-one million dollars. I was a senior manager, I get, you know, I'm responsible. What that really means, if we don't sell the bond, I got found, my company does, so that's.
You gotta go to work.
That's the way we expected it. So they decide who get what part by having their obligation.
All right, sir. Thank you again.
Thank you for the business, too.
That's right.
Thank you.
What is?
Appreciate you, Lord.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Attorney, you want to just follow the agenda and come on down and address this?
Yes, sir, I think the administrator's going to, number two is, or B is where you're at, sir? Yes, sir.
All right, is everybody ready? At this time, the next on the agenda is the Jared Daniels Road Bid Award. Mr. Butler, over to you.
Mr. Chairman, in front of you, you've got the bid tab sheet for these five bidders for the Jared Daniels Road Project. Second page, you have a letter from engineer that reviewed those, and the third page is, is showing the same thing. The first page, with the, with the addition of, of what, five percent, would look like added to the low bid, and the reason for that. You have, you have a low bid, the five bids, one of them low, and then the other difference in this is, one of the bidders is a local bidder. So for the board consideration, you have low bid being Roberts and Roberts, three million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six dollars and fifty-five cents for that project. It, um, it's slightly shy of what the amount of grant money that we have to do the project with, but, um, I would say, for the board consideration, you got a low bid and you got a local bid for it, and it's going to be probably at best a political decision which way you go on it.
All right, Commissioner Bryan, let me, uh, direct a question to you. At our last regular meeting, you asked that this be, the vote be delayed until you could review. Uh, have you taken that time?
Um, I have received the information, but I have partially reviewed it, but I would like us to address this issue at a regular meeting, which is what the, the public would expect at the last regular meeting. We delayed it, and I wouldn't think anyone in the public would expect for us to address this at this special meeting. It was added, um, I, I think a day or two ago to the agenda. So I, I think it's inappropriate for us to address this at this special meeting. We had advertised this as the, uh, public hearing for the bond, and that's what people expected this to be. And if I can understand tagging on something that's just a ministerial issue.
I don't think this is tagged on, no. I got this noticed when, uh, Ms. Roberts sent it out to you a few days back.
Well, I think it was you that put it on the agenda, is that correct? I think it was under your name.
Oh, my name, all of this is above my name on this, but.
It was yesterday or the day before. I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, anybody who watches the regular meetings, they would expect this to be addressed at the next regular meeting. You know, it, it's just odd to have so many issues addressed at special meetings, that's my, my position.
All right, thank you, but my question again, and, and do you have any concerns with engineering? Do you have any concerns, or we, you've had from Tuesday, what's the day, Wednesday, a good week to review this? Okay. All right, Mr. Commissioner McLemore.
Actually, I, I have a few questions I want to ask about this, because I was, I was part of this in the, uh, last board meeting for, for maybe trying to delay it a little bit. But, uh, Mr. Butler, I understand Roberts and Roberts was a low bid. Question for you. GAC, were they in the bidder's preference range of the seven percent? Did they come in that local bidder's preference?
GAC, according to your ordinance, is listed as a local bidder.
Yes.
I think, I think also CW Roberts, not Roberts and Roberts, but CW Roberts has been listed as a local bidder also.
What does CW have here in the county? I'm not aware of it, do you know?
I think in the, I believe in the Tapper Building, I believe it's where the office has been in the past. I don't know today, but they have claimed local bidder's preference in the past. But they are, they are significantly high, too.
Right, CW.
Yeah, that's right.
But the difference between GAC and Roberts and Roberts is something like seventy-seven thousand, is that correct?
That's correct.
GAC being the local bidder, it fit the guidelines, was the, was, was it stated in the bid for the local bidder preference?
The bid notice, as all, one hundred percent of bid notices that go out, state that the county has a local bidder's preference policy. When you go to the policy, the policy leaves it up to the board to either implement that or not implement that.
Okay. I think, gentlemen, that, that's where I'm having one of the big issues is, it was in the bid specs package or whatever for a local bidder. If we're not going to honor that, we don't need to, we don't need to have it in our bid package. That's the way I think. And my next question is to Mr. Attorney. Is that okay?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Attorney, if for some reason or another, we didn't award this bid to the lowest bidder and went to the local bid who, who fit the criteria in the percentage range, seven percent, I think this company was five percent, is anything illegal on that?
Uh, Commissioner, no. The question, you said the lowest bid, and the way you put the advertisement out for the county is you do implement your local bidder preference policy. This board has that discretion, but there's two factors, which is the lowest and most, best qualified. And so you commissioners obviously look at the numbers and also the qualifications of these bids. So in your evaluation under the local bidder preference, it gives you that flexibility so you can ultimately make as a body the best decision for the county in terms of the numbers and the qualified bidders. So I believe that the engineer said they were all qualified bids, they all could do the work, and then the question is the lowest and best. And so you can factor in the numbers and also each of your evaluations as what's the best bid for the county. So no, there's nothing illegal, if I understand your question correct, but you can, you must, you commissioners make the evaluation both on the numbers and the qualifications of these bidders.
All right, so I'm going to go to the next step, Mr. Chairman, if, if I can. I'm looking at the past experience with, and I'm talking GAC versus the other four commis-, uh, the other four contractors. I know GAC has a fine reputation with Guff County. Is that not correct, Mr. Butler?
Correct.
All right, question for you. Have you ever called GAC contractors with an issue and got a negative answer? In other words, support or rock debris, repaving roads, whatever it may be, have you ever got a negative feedback?
They've helped us every time we've asked.
Have you, every time, yes, that's what I wanted to hear. I know on personal experience, we've had families in Guff County that's needing help, medical issues, whatever it may be. I can go on and on and on about the thousands of dollars that this local company has put into Guff County. I can't go that far with the other four companies. And I just want to lay that out there, and, and I think with this particular bid, there's something like a seventy-seven thousand dollar difference there or whatever, I don't know. Andrew is in the audience today, I'd like to hear from you and discuss this a little bit further before I actually make my mind up on what direction I want to go, you know, with this.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. We hadn't, uh, first of all, hadn't even got a motion, what are we going on there, so we can, just write if you want to. Uh, little bit out of term here, let's go, Commissioner.
I, I just have a question about the bid tab sheet with the figures with the addendum added, what, what we're looking at.
It's, it's not relevant to the discussion because that, that did not pan out.
Okay, so just disregard that, okay. All right, so we're, we're still looking at North Florida Construction, that is also below GAC, or those are the figures we're looking at, okay.
Uh, let me say this before then, I will give the gentleman here time to say. We have a bid process, and, uh, we had announced to the board our next regular meeting, we're going to address this local preference. Bay County had it, they got in trouble, I don't think we need, ours doesn't even have a cap on it. You're talking about a ten million dollar project, and if they're local here, that's seven hundred thousand dollars that you're just handing them. I see my good friend Tom Grady back there, would you let someone just hand you seven hundred thousand dollars? Sure you would.
Seven percent.
So we're going to, yeah, on ten million dollars, it'd be seven hundred thousand, yeah. Yeah, brilliant cash. Uh, so we have these bid processes to go out, and we get back in, and we have a, uh, our staff reviews them, our engineering firm reviews them, and, uh, I know CW Roberts, Roberts and Roberts, they're over there right now on I-ten doing some paving, saw their equipment over there. I know, uh, Guff Assault, and I do not know North Florida Construction or Guff Coast Utilities, but surely they all meet, uh, they can be bonded, they meet the insurance, the whole nine yards. But when it comes to the voters and tax dollars, that's what we're supposed to do, is look out after the tax dollars. In this case, uh, GAC out of five bidders, there's five on this tabulation sheet, they're number three. There's two contractors that bid lower than they did. I just want that brought to the attention, but we're responsible for checking the people's money, and just going to reach out and get, or we need to just put everybody's name in the hat, and we just draw each time, or we just have a rotating system. It's, uh, pointless to do this. And as far as this bid preference, yes, it's in there, but we are not legally bound to stay with that. That's a board discretion on this. Having said that, uh, Mr. Andrews, we'll give you three minutes, sir. Having said that, Mr. Andrews, we'll give you three minutes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chairman, I'm ready. My battery is blinking, it's fixing to go on the solution, so I'll have to sign off.
Uh-oh, we're going to get you on a boat, possibly.
I apologize. It's blinking on me now, so long as I can, but I may be fixing to lose.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right, Andrew.
Thank you, sir. I'm Andrew Ryle with GAC Contractors. Our address is 1151 Industrial Road here in Port St. Joe. You all know, we've been at that location since 2006, when the office was constructed there. We've been a part of this community since 1958. That was when our first project was completed in Gulf County by Mr. Hilton and his family. We have a long history here, and most of the facts have been stated. I have no arguments with the facts. I would like to say that, based on the information that I have, that each bidder that has bid on this project on the base bid was over what you have budgeted for construction. So at any point, you're going to have to negotiate a change of scope and work in order to get this project completed 100% like you want to do with the grant money that is available and no additional funding from the taxpayers of Gulf County. We propose to you that use your local bidder preference. We have ideas that we can save money in order to get this project under budget and 100% of this project completed without any additional funding. And that is my main point of contingency here today is to let you know that we feel that it can be done by our company, and we're willing to work with your staff and your engineer in order to accomplish this goal. And I'm open for any questions, if anyone has any.
Mr. Yeager, if you still are, any questions? He's gone. Be gone, okay.
He'll be out on us.
Okay. No questions? Allwood, come up.
Question, if you want to give your name or anything. I have one question. You bid 100% of the road.
Yes, sir. Clay Smolow, Purple Ridge. Yes, sir.
Only question. Question.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Attorney, are you ready for, Mr. Butler, are you ready for action here?
If there's no public comment, the commission's done.
Well, I'm fixing to see if I can get a motion for the low bid here. I hear a motion to accept a low bid, this Jarrett Daniels Road project. I have a motion to accept the low bid. I have a motion to accept low bid.
Mr. Chairman, may I just?
Yes, sure.
Again, I think this is unusual for us to be addressing this issue with little notice. Were the other contractors notified that we would be discussing and voting on this today? Because they also didn't have an opportunity to address the board if they did not know that we were going to address this today. I know we sent that email out, but, you know, I don't know that that really goes to all the contractors that bid, and we have had one contractor address us. I am in favor of the low bid, and, you know, I think it's unfortunate that this is how it's being handled. I would like for us to address this at a regular meeting, but I am in favor of saving the county taxpayers' money whenever we can. I know that we've asked staff if they've had any issues with GAC, but we didn't ask if they've had issues with the other contractors, and we have two contractors that are lower. Roberts and Roberts is the low bid. Have we had problems with Roberts and Roberts? Would be the question, I would think. Is there a reason that we shouldn't award to the low bid?
Mr. Butler, do you care?
Chairman, I know no issues with any of these contractors on this list.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so I will reiterate that I don't like that we're addressing this at the special meeting, but I do believe if there's everything being the same, and we have no reason to not award this contract to the low bid, then I would make the motion that we award this contract to the low bid Roberts and Roberts.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Brian to award the bid to the low bidder, Jarrett Daniels Road, which is Roberts and Roberts. I hear a second to Commissioner Brian's motion.
A second with discussion.
Sure, we've got a second by Commissioner Quinn with discussion. Commissioner Quinn, you now have the floor, sir.
I just want to ask, should we put this off till the next meeting, when Commissioner Yeager will be here also? Or should we move forward?
That's our discretion. Commissioner Brian, who made the motion, holding it to a regular meeting, I really don't see if it's on here, why, what difference it would make to it. The big delay, the reason was for the commissioner over here to review, I think she's reviewed and seen, yes, and as the engineer said, it's probably be some cloud issue there, were we talking 100% or 75%, and he said this is 100%. This is a separate way to, the more you can twist it around, the more... All right, all right. Is your second stand then, or is any further discussion in the board out there? I mean, from the audience? Or is any further board discussion? I'll make one comment on this. As Mr. Brian stated, our responsibility to look out after the tax dollars. We've got a bid process. You bid, and if you get it, you meet it, you should be awarded the bid. So at this time, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of Roberts and Roberts for the Jarrett Daniels Road? How do you vote?
Yes.
You vote yes for it? How you vote, Commissioner?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Macklemore?
No.
And the chair votes yes, so the bid award goes to Roberts and Roberts on a 3-1 vote. Right? Move along here. Mr. Butler, we have, Mr. Paul, thank you for your patience. I don't have any clients you might have this year, but thank you for coming. This is very important. The next order is for the Ship Aces Foundation. This has been going on for what, over a year or about a year? All right, Mr. Butler, would you?
Mr. Chairman, I hand it out. Give you a handout, three-page handout.
Yes.
The top page is from April 10th. I got an email from Rick Hayman with Aces Foundation. Second page is this email I got back in June to do with the affordable housing, the units to be built here in Port St. Joe. And the third page is a blank copy of the local government verification of contribution grant form. And the issue at hand is the Aces Foundation, vote the county commissioner agreed back in June to contribute $300,000 of ship money towards a project, and I think it's, the amount of money varies, but somewhere in the neighborhood of $7 million that this money helped get us in line to get for those affordable housing. And we're down to the point in time now, we need to be able to tell Aces Foundation and the state that we're going to cough the money up. All this money does not have to be paid until about a year. Some can be paid upfront, some after July fiscal year, and some by the time the project is completed. But they're looking for a document from Gulf County, that'd be this back page, verification of contribution, that we're going to kick in $300,000 for the project. Mr. Attorney, Mr. Joe has done a lot of work with Florida Housing Coalition in trying to figure out how to take our money and modify our strategy on ship money and squeeze the money out of ship to get 300,000. The quick and dirty is, the current amount of money we have, we can pick up a quarter of that, so just roughly 87,500, 87,500 dollars. After July, the allocation comes in, we can took another quarter of that money out, all that $350,000, get another 87,500, which adds up to be about 175, and these are rough numbers.
All right, Commissioner, I mean, it's plain here on television, it's 300,000, what will it yield? How many million?
About 7 million.
7 million, so we're looking for 300, Joe, to get 7 million, and this is for the project. I understand over in the North Port St. Joe area that was selected, the select committee is, this has been going on and on, I'm just trying to refresh what we're talking about here.
Been going on for the last year, roughly about a year, probably, maybe a little better.
Okay. We need to come up with a 300, scared of 7 million, thereabout.
And it's not as simple as, and Joe has put a lot of time into it, Jeremy's put a lot of time into it, but it's not as simple reaching in the pot. We have plenty of money in the pot, we have plenty of money in the ship pot, and it's going for a good dollar, take $300,000 and get a pretty good return on the investment. But they're restricting us to grab a quarter of the money now, and a quarter of the money after July. We can take a little bit of the money, all the recaptured funds that we've been recapturing since 1992 that's come back, we have some money there. But all said and done, we're going to be $100,000, $125,000 short of money, even though it's in the ship pot. We're going to be not that much money short today to reach in there and grab and hand it over to them. And my recommendation to the board would be that we give them a letter saying that we're going to contribute $300,000 so they can move forward with what they're doing. Go ahead and take the amount of money out of the ship money today, come July or after the allocation money gets here, take that 87,500. And then we're talking about 100, 125, probably rough numbers, we would need to come up with some shape, form, fashion, our reserve of some form to, that you can get back at the next year's allocation of money, our ship money. Eventually, over a period of a year and a half time, you'll get all your money back, you'll get your money. The 175 will go out shipped immediately, pretty much immediately, in the next two or three months, and the remaining 125, thereabout, would be from county coffers to be reimbursed by ship at a later date.
What you're saying, we may have to front some money.
By fronting $100,000, $125,000, it pretty much guarantees you get that $7 million project. So for the board's consideration, they say the letter needs to go in probably by the end of the month, to them.
Best month. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Okay, go ahead.
So it's a project, everybody knows the project, they're off Clifford Sims, and the city of Port St. Joe donated the land, and the land was, they acquired the land from St. Joe Company for affordable housing, and we were fortunate enough working between the county and the city and the county, where the county contributed $300,000 really made it work when they went to the state, pretty much put Aces Foundation first in line to get the affordable housing money.
Okay.
So at the end of, you know, year and a half time, the county taxpayers won't have any money in the project. It'd be a loan of sorts for that period of time, for 100, 125,000 rough numbers. We can, like I say, we can come up with, by far, the majority of the money, our ship money, that they'll let us squeeze. We do have upcoming conversation with Michael Chaney. We made the request to Michael, and he has talked with us before and helped us before, and we're talking housing, and we're going to try to see if Michael can help, look at what we have, change some strategies to get more than the 87,500 and the 87,500 out of two different fiscal years immediately. But we got that coming up, but right now, our recommendation to the board would be that we give them a commitment letter, we're going to commit $300,000 of this money to them, and it's going to be, like I say, that last money will be contributed to them probably in about 12 months, 11 or 12 months.
All right, Commissioner Macklemore.
Mr. Butler, I don't have a problem with this really and truly. There's two things. I want to make sure that we can get our refund back from ship. Y'all going to be able to work that out? I mean, when the ship sends us that allocation, they're going to say we're going to need to build houses. They're not going to tell us we're going to put $125,000 over in our pocket.
That would be our question to Florida Housing.
But you'll get that straightened out?
Yes, sir.
Before then. Number two, they're needing a commitment from us for the money? I'm needing a commitment from them to hire local people. That's what I'm needing.
Wasn't that already, we discussed it maybe a year ago?
It's been discussed, but it's, I'm telling you, I've been here before, I've seen that happen before, and I want our local people on board here. Those are my two questions.
We can relay that to them.
All right. Is that all, Commissioner? Don, joking, you may can shed some light here to answer some of these questions that may arise. Sure, you have the floor. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm Joe Paul, ship administrator. In answer to your first question, Commissioner Macklemore, the current L-HAP that's sitting in front of you, which is going in for the next three fiscal years, does include a rental strategy, which includes the 87,500 maximum, which will guarantee your money back, once this L-HAP is approved. It's due 2 May to Florida Housing. Once it's approved, signed by y'all, and Florida Housing accepts it, this rental strategy will be in the same L-HAP for the next three fiscal years, not including this one. In answer to one thing that Mr. Don Butler said, we are endeavoring to actually change the L-HAP so that we can use the current money we have right now to get that 87,500 out of there. Florida Housing is on the line whether they're going to let us do it or not, but I think we're in a position with Michael Chaney to get them to do that, which will get us 87,500 out of the money we just received in September. In doing that, it'll get us a little bit ahead of time. We have a little bit of program income that we can use for the project, and we're actually working on another project that will get us some more program money, and we're talking $20,000 on each one of these. So conceivably, you could be $85,000 instead of $125,000 behind, but we can't say that to you because everything's not set in stone at this time. I am positive that we are making steps forward in that endeavor, and I have honestly worked diligently to try to do this, to try to make this 300,000 work so that we did not have to come to you today, but it was just impossible. The 1314 money, which we still have some of to spend, does not, was not authorized by Florida Housing to be used for new construction. That's why we had to come to you today. If we'd allowed us to do 1314, we'd have had it done, and we wouldn't be asking you for it today.
Okay. Again, I don't have any problem with the whole program. Mr. Chairman, I think it's a good program, I just, I like some security fence, maybe, going into it.
I do, I have a couple of questions. Okay, if I understand this correctly, the 300,000 is what they need to put up as kind of equity to get their loan? Okay. So I think I heard at another meeting that they could sell this after 15 years, that they could sell the units or the project. So they will make some income on managing this property, they're going to run it, and certainly they should have some income coming in. So my question is, can we, and I don't know if it's permissible under the ship rules, but can we, rather than the 300,000 being a grant, can it be a loan, a subordinated loan, where we have a standby agreement? They would not have to make any payments until they're... They would not have to make any payments until their, and the, the first loan is completed, but our three hundred thousand for the ship would be secured by the property so that when they did sell the property and the first was paid, that potentially that money could go back into the ship program? Is, is that a possibility?
Commissioner, uh, my understanding, just working on this the last couple of years with the staff and, and the ship team, and then now Paces Foundation last year and a half, is the funds that have been pledged, and I just want, the commission all already pledged this last year. So, they came before you in June and July, the deadline was there, you all said, yes, go put us in. They came back and said, great news, we got it, thank you for your pledge. So we're here now in April to reaffirm your pledge, but you've already pledged this money last year, and we've gone down this road for the last year, where they, everything's, Gateway Manor's coming. And so they need this reaffirmation. In the last year, we worked with staff to get those numbers. With regard specifically to your question, Commissioner, when we give out program income for ship, um, for purchase assistance, um, they, they are built in where it's over a ten-year period if they stay in the home, that that is diminished. Um, and at the end of those ten years, the ship program considers that money repaid to the county because it instituted its mission, which was to help them purchase or rehabilitate a home. Um, this is a fifteen-year, fifteen-year program. My understanding of the funds and the pledge is, once we pledge this three hundred, can it be done? I don't know the answer. Uh, the way it's structured in the pledge right now is that this money goes in to create that seven million dollar investment from the federal grant and the Paces contribution, that that money is absorbed into that property over that initial ten-year period under the ship program. Five years after that, they do have the ability to, but the ship pledge is absorbed into that property for the mission of which they are doing, which is very low income, new construction. I'm not aware of a way that we can go about subordinating, in essence, a loan to them. The pledge that was originally structured was the grant of the ship money beyond the ten years that you initially would give someone a twenty thousand dollar loan. They'd buy a house, they'd go out and buy it, they'd stay, we, we'd take a second on that home. And after ten years, that is, um, that we give them a satisfaction and a release on that second mortgage.
So when they sell the money, would go to the Paces Foundation?
Yes.
And it would be used for similar projects like this in other areas, or do we know?
Yeah, and I know the initial, I don't know the specifics, but the initial investment of the Paces Foundation is an investment in this property as well. So they'd get the federal grant, they have this, um, smaller county pledge of the ship, and they also put their outlay into it as well.
They do, so they do have skin in the game?
Yes.
Then my other question would be, um, Mr. Butler was saying we would have a quarter, approximately a quarter now, a quarter in July, and then we'd have the shortfall. Are they not going to move forward till we're able to give them the whole amount? Or are they going to move forward as we give them the quarter and the quarter?
They can move forward with a commitment letter. They know you're going to pay them. The quarter, just to make sure we're clear, the quarter is a quarter of three hundred fifty thousand dollar allocation. It's not a quarter of the three hundred thousand. But, but yes, with the commitment letter, they can move forward.
Can we potentially put benchmarks in as we disperse the, those funds? That they have to be at a certain position with the project? And then as a secondary part of that question, and, and I don't want this to happen, but if the project failed before we were able to reimburse the county for that money from the ship program, assuming we're not able to get it now, will that affect our ability to repay the county if the project failed and didn't go forward?
My understanding of the timeline, Commissioner, is they'll, and, and this is the last I heard from Mark Dumas and, and Rick Hayman, was December, they'll have people there, occupying the Gateway Manor. If that's off by thirty or sixty days as they get more current, but there'll be occupancy at the end of this year. The pledge and the request of the commitment letter is for the next year. So we'll have a finished product, the county will have a, a structure in place. The commitment letter's the letter in terms of the funding, um, that will come obviously after or later down the road. So in terms of them defaulting or not completing the project, that pledge or that letter is the commitment from the county. The funding would come after that.
So it is dependent on them moving forward? Okay. And we wouldn't have any issue refunding ourselves from ship if ship lets us do this for the one hundred to one twenty-five? If something went awry?
Yeah, the, the packet from Joe Paul in front of you is an amendment of our local housing assistance plan. And for this year, next year, and the following year, what we're doing is we're changing the county's rental strategy program where this very low income, we can use up to twenty-five percent per year. So the rental strategy's now been changed for Gulf County. Twenty-five percent of the three hundred fifty thousand for the coming three years, this year, next year, and the following. That eighty-seven-five is what we now can earmark for that. So that's going to be put aside. Joe Paul's going to move forward with the rest of the funds, take out the administrative, and then we're going to, through Joe's office, allocate these funds to the ship-qualified participants. This eighty-seven-five stays there, earmarked for that project. So when it comes time to go through the clerk's office and issue those funds, that will already been put aside. And like I said, the next three years, we have the funding there. Two of the three will have tangible before we have to issue it. It's where we fall short. I think right now we have sixteen thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and eight cents of qualified program income that we can add to that hundred and seventy-five thousand. That gets us to a hundred and ninety-one. Joe just mentioned we have potentially about forty thousand dollars in additional program income from the last year that we could qualify. That pushes us closer to where your short, your, your coverage for the next year would be about seventy or eighty thousand dollars. But again, I, I just wanted to emphasize, the commission's already pledged this. They just need that commitment to reaffirm where you were last year.
Uh, real quickly, Commissioner, the, uh, the part of expending the money that you asked initially, the eighty-seven thousand five hundred, although committed by ship, cannot be expended until the project is built out and occupied.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and that rental strategy is on page twelve of the L-HAP that I showed you, that's the addition to our L-HAP.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Administrator, anything else you need in, a motion to, or a letter?
We, we need a, you know, a motion to the board, and a, a vote on the commitment letter to Paces.
Okay. Motion, send, letter, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Macklemore, letter to the Paces. I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. No discussion on the board, anyone in the audience? Well, if there's no opposition, motion passes, four and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the second would be Mr. Joe Paul's recommendations to accept the amended L-HAP for the next three years so they can be submitted prior to the deadline at the end of the year, so if we can have an authorizing vote of the commission.
The move, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Macklemore, hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn, any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience? No opposition, motion pass, four and oh.
Mr. Chairman.
That be it?
Yes, sir.
Any other before the board today? Administrator, that pretty much wipes it out here. All right, thank you everyone for picking time to come. It's time of entertaining motion of adjournment. The move, Mr. Chairman. Paul, be adjourned. Thank you. Okay. Thank you all.